That was part of the investigation. And I'll also show you the Michigan High School Athletic Association's concussion protocol. So that's going to be ultimately displayed on the screen. But the reason we're here tonight is for the investigation report into a formal complaint that was filed regarding the Duran varsity football program. That complaint had two particular concerns. First, player safety stemming from an injury that was sustained, a suspected concussion that an athlete suffered during the October 25th, 2024 football game, and the coaching staff's failure to follow the Michigan High School Athletic Association's concussion protocol regarding it. The second concern was that there exists a toxic culture within the varsity football program where the head coach did not take player safety seriously enough and would belittle players who complained of injuries. The investigation was conducted by the middle school principal due to conflicts of interest with the varsity football coach, the athletic director, and the high school principal, all of whom are related. To ensure a fair and impartial investigation, to avoid any actual or perceived conflict of interest, the superintendent had the middle school principal conduct the investigation. The board members all have the investigation report in front of you. There's interviews with at least 11 of the students who are current varsity football players, or were current varsity football players this school year, I should say. Interviews with all of the football coaches, as well as interviews with the athletic director and the athletic trainer. In addition to interviews conducted by the middle school principal, the superintendent also spoke with the athletic director and athletic trainer. The superintendent's comments regarding those interviews are shown in red font in your investigation report. And then, in addition, the middle school principal and superintendent also reviewed the video that was submitted as part of the complaint. I'm probably going to be showing you a different video that's not zoomed in and out as you go, but the video that would have been just on the screen. And also reviewed the Michigan High School Athletic Association protocol, which I want to bring up now. Give me one second. This is the Michigan High School Athletic Association protocol for concussions. And you'll see at the top, the quote language. "Any athlete who exhibits signs, symptoms, or behaviors consistent with a concussion, such as loss of consciousness, headache, dizziness, confusion, or balance problems, shall be immediately removed from the contest and shall not return to play until cleared by an appropriate healthcare professional." As you continue to look through this language... As you continue to look through the language, you can see that there's the use of appropriate healthcare professional. And then also later down in item number two, where it says, "If it's confirmed by the school's designated healthcare professional that the student did not sustain a concussion, the head coach may so advise the officials during an appropriate stoppage of play, and the athlete may re-enter competition pursuant to the contest rules." Then in number three, subsection B, you can actually see who the appropriate and/or designated healthcare professionals are. That is, a medical doctor, a doctor of osteopathy, the MD, and the DO. Physician's assistant or nurse practitioner may clear an individual to return to an activity. The Michigan High School Athletic Association's protocol does not allow athletic trainers to determine whether or not a student athlete has sustained a concussion. Only the designated healthcare professionals can do that. As you can also see in the Michigan High School Athletic Association's protocol regarding concussions, these are the sanctions for non-compliance with the Michigan High School Athletic Association policy. A concussed student is ineligible to return to the athletic meet or contest on the same day that a concussion is sustained. The concussed student is ineligible to re-enter on the subsequent day without written authorization from the appropriate healthcare provider. If a student does re-enter without following the protocol, the particular contest in which they enter is forfeit. In addition, the program is placed on probation through that sports season of the following school year for the first offense. What I'm going to show you now is the video that was of the football game. This video does not have sound. This video is not the video that was submitted. Mr. Chair, would the board like to see the video that was shown? And then I'll show this one again. I'll show both videos if that's what the crowd is demanding. This was the video that was submitted. And now I'm going to go back to the video so that it's not zoomed out, because I didn't want the board to have it as if though it was prejudicial. What I want to do is I'm going to show the video without... I'm going to come back and give you commentary the second time through.
Show the game footage.
They don't even have the...
They got the whole field right there.
Where's the video she says, "Oh, they call timeout." How about we call timeout?
Yeah, that's right.
We call the timeout here.
...of a parent that isn't even qualified.
We're not looking at this.
Because she had a great investigation.
Screen's not big enough.
Because she goes with the...
We have a better video.
Yeah.
Send the video.
I still can't hear anything.
Where's the video of the coach with the trainer?
This is ridiculous.
That video of the coach with the trainer on the sideline.
But we're not seeing that.
By the way, what category?
Why do we pay for an athletic trainer? Who has a doctor? He has a doctor.
Come on.
This is irrelevant.
Well, Katie would be telling you why it's going down.
Oh, yeah. Maybe bring your partner.
The one whose kid goes to...
Who's in the dressing room? Who's in the dressing room to explain herself?
That man just...
Ridiculous. Ridiculous.
I think Coach Glad would be an amazing coach.
Call the timeout.
We're calling timeout.
Grand timeout.
That's a real video.
It was a game video. This is irrelevant.
Football, not wrong.
Hey, hey, folks, we didn't come here to argue, okay? Folks, it's a time for public comment. Please, please allow this speech.
Some of the factors that have been brought up, from people shouting in the crowd too, are not material facts. And I know people are going, "What's up?" Whether or not it is a shoulder-to-shoulder hit or a helmet-to-helmet hit is immaterial. You'll see the... So what you're going to see is there's going to be a pass. Where a defender is going to be coming in for a tackle, and he's going to be hit blindside right there, right by the ball court. The investigation found that the... There was a penalty flag on the play. You can see the referee picking up that flag. There was a penalty on the play. You now see the player holding his hat. Player number three is going to walk up to this player. According to player number three, the student holding his hat's eyes were twitching. Here, he stumbles. Player number three then calls for the coach to send in a substitute. The coach is sending a substitute, and you can see the coach down there calling the player off of the field. As the player comes off the field, Coach Webb walks onto the field... Or excuse me, I think it might be Coach Spalding walks onto the field. According to Coach Webb... According to Coach Webb, as the player walked past him, the player told Coach Webb, "I got the wind knocked out of me." Coach Webb told the player to get checked out by the trainer. That was according to both Coach Webb and the player. The player reported that he talked to the trainer and that he told the trainer that he had the wind knocked out of him. The player did not tell the trainer that he had suffered any type of head-to-head hit, shoulder-to-shoulder hit, or anything in which he may have sustained a concussion. That's what the investigation found. So at this point in time, according to Coach Webb's interview, he was told that the player said to him, "I got the wind knocked out of me." According to the trainer, the athletic trainer checked the player out, and the player told the athletic trainer, "I got the wind knocked out of me." We're going to keep playing the video. There are going to be two more plays that happen before the student athlete who had allegedly sustained a concussion goes back out onto the field. This is the first of the two plays. It's going to be a short pass towards the bottom of the screen. Because I'm watching the video. This next play is going to be a pass play, a deep pass into the end zone. It's going to be an incomplete pass. After the incomplete pass, the player who allegedly sustained a concussion is going to head back into the game after this play. So you'll see this pass is incomplete into the end zone. What you'll also see is most of the defenders are going to turn around and head back towards the line of scrimmage. Now the player is entering onto the field. He's running past players who are coming in the opposite direction. He's running towards the goal line. He runs past players who are going back, and now he retreats back towards the line of scrimmage, into his position. At this point, you can see, you can see the middle linebacker player number three interacting with Coach Webb. He just put his hands on his helmet. He's just going to wave his left arm. And at this time, Coach Webb calls a timeout. So you see Coach Webb has just called the timeout. Coach Webb is now walking to the field for the timeout. He's going to interact with player number three right now, and the two of them are talking. According to the testimony of the player, the player advised Coach Webb that he saw the other player who just went back onto the field exhibiting signs of a concussion, in particular, balance issues, in particular, that the student's eyes were twitching, in particular, that the student was holding his hat. Coach Webb testified that Coach Webb had not seen any of those signs. According to Coach Webb, due to the crowd in the field and the fact that the student was on the opposite side of the field, he himself did not exhibit and see any of those signs that were being exhibited by the student athlete. But during this timeout, player number three, according to both player number three and Coach Webb, told Coach Webb that this player had exhibited those signs of a concussion. According to Coach Webb's own statement, Coach Webb said that that player always acts that way, and that he had been checked and cleared by Ken for a concussion. He said that he had been, excuse me, he had been checked and cleared by Ken, the athletic trainer, not specifically for a concussion. However, when student player number three advised Coach Webb of the various signs and symptoms of a concussion, the student athlete should have been removed from the game and not returned to the game until he was cleared by an appropriate designated healthcare professional. That did not happen. The player was allowed to continue to participate in the game, which is a violation of the Michigan High School Athletic Association concussion protocol. That is the finding of the investigation with respect to issue number one. As I mentioned, whether it was a helmet-to-helmet hit, that's immaterial. What matters is whether or not the student exhibited signs, symptoms, or behaviors that are consistent with a concussion. Whether or not Coach Webb himself witnessed that isn't immaterial. Once player number three advised Coach Webb in the huddle that he saw those signs and symptoms of a concussion, Coach Webb should have had the player removed. We fully understand that the player is not a doctor, that the coach is not a doctor, that the athletic trainer is a healthcare professional, as indicated by the Michigan High School Athletic Association rules. That's the result of the findings for the first part of the investigation. In addition, through the interviews with the students, multiple students described situations where the coach would be little players and use the mean terms of the players if the players reported that they had an injury. The specific words that the coach used with respect to players who had injuries are included in the report and begin with the letter P and begin with the letter S. With that, that's the outcome of the investigation report, that there was a violation of the Michigan High School Athletic Association rules and protocol regarding a concussion, and that there does appear to be a preponderance of evidence that there existed a toxic culture with respect to little players who had injuries that may have resulted in the failure to continue to play despite exhibiting signs and symptoms of a concussion. Mr. Chair, if you guys have questions, I will strip around and answer any questions anyone has. The outcome of the investigation report.
Child, be ashamed of yourself. That's a good man up there to care of everyone and your kids.
All right. All right, guys, here we are. Next up on our, uh, next up on our agenda is votes and resolutions. On the motion sheet, we have all the resolution for the evening. That, uh, can I have a motion? Do I hear a motion for the investigation report?
I move that the Board of Education hereby approves to release the football investigation report to the general public.
Now, where is the video? Was the real video?
It's been moved by the Board, that's supported by Shepard. The Board of Education hereby approves the release of the football investigation report to the general public. Is there any discussion on a motion by the Board? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Have you sent that video out to people already?
Any discussion? Hearing none on the roll call vote, please?
No comment.
Yes. Dennis, yes. Jake Sinudin, yes. Hayler, yes. Bieber Nix, yes. Shepard, yes. Huh, yes.
Motion passes. Next up on our agenda, we have public comment. Folks, we're going to have three minutes to speak. That is the rule. The Board will not engage with any dialogue at this time. Any questions that are asked will be addressed by the end of the day on the next school business day. So that is not tomorrow. That will be the second of December. We're going to take all the information down, and we will address any of your questions that arrived today. First up, we have Carly Webb.
My name is Carly Webb. I'm the wife of Coach John Webb. Hello, my name is Carly Webb. I'm the wife... I'm the wife and coach of, or wife of Coach John Webb and mother of middle school students Kalen and Nicholas Webb. As you may or may not know, John and I have been part of this school district our entire lives. We started dating our sophomore year of high school when we were 15. Although we moved away briefly to Muskegon for one year of college, we returned back to our roots here in Duran to get married and start our family. You also may not know that John has been coaching on and off here in Duran, at Duran Area Schools since he was 19. Over the past 21 years, he has dedicated his heart and soul to this district. I would challenge you to find someone that has sacrificed as much as he has. Let me be clear, it's never been about notoriety or popularity. Hence, that's why you probably are unaware that he has been involved for this long. When Coach Winbigger left as head football coach and took another coaching job, we knew it was a perfect time to step up and lead the school district and the community into, into a better, more positive direction. John was interviewed and subsequently awarded the job as head football coach, and we made the decision as a family to accept the job. We knew this was going to be a huge commitment for not only John, but myself, my, my daughter Kalen, and my son Nicholas. We did it because we knew it could mean, what it could mean to the school district, the players, and this community, to finally have a coach that was not just using Duran as another stepping stone for their coaching career achievement. With all that said, the day we learned John's contract would not be renewed, emotions were high, no doubt. We did each individually take to social media to let our friends and family know the situation. Never did we think things would snowball into what they are today, but if there was in fact a thorough and unbiased investigation carried out and revealed to John and his staff, perhaps we would not even be standing right here tonight. As I mentioned in my social media post, I'm struggling with so many motions through this entire ordeal. First, I'm angry. As a mother, I know how I would feel as someone, especially without consulting me first, made a medical complaint on behalf of, on my child's behalf. I'd be enraged. I'm absolutely heartbroken for Blake Chapman and his parents. They didn't ask for any of this. They were completely blindsided, and how dare another parent speak on this child's behalf?
That's right.
At the very least, the complaining parent, the school board, and the superintendent owes them a formal apology. Have you ever reached out to this child or his family, or at least asked how he's doing? Shame on all of you. I'm heartbroken for this coaching staff, Tim Krupp, Mike Delorge, Bruce Spalding, Eric Carlson, Scott Winslow, and Wyatt Campbell. Although their contracts were not terminated, their names have been dragged through the mud as well. You've taken one belligerent parent's edited video and commentary and a select few players' words and used them as gospel, as if this coaching staff had no regard or care for Blake or any other player for that matter. You've implied that these men are so weak as individuals that they allowed John to bully them into making children play injured. These coaches have also devoted and donated so much of their time and energy to the success of this program. Time away from their own families and their own financial contributions have gone completely unnoticed. As a taxpaying member of this community, I'm embarrassed. Superintendent Knapp and this Board have had multiple opportunities to reconsider their decision. You've been begged and pleaded with. This is blown out of proportion, and our small, tight-knit community didn't ask for any of this. How are we ever... How are we ever going to expect administrators or teachers or coaches to ever want to work here again? You do totally get it? You think it's funny? You do totally get it, you think it's funny.
Next up, we have Trilly Miller.
Hello, I'm just going to be really quick and I'm going to give the rest of my time to Carly. My husband and I took over the youth program from John and Carly, and I don't know if anybody realizes how much time goes into that. The hours, the days, the complaints, and they've done it forever. And that text that I got on a Tuesday afternoon from Carly about wrestling was gut-wrenching because we weren't ready to do it, but we will. Because we're not going to let the kids down. So Carly, I support John Webb. I support John Webb.
Well, I'll get back to it. As a taxpaying member of this community, I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for all of you. Superintendent Knapp and the board have had multiple opportunities to reconsider this decision. You've been begged and pleaded with. Not only by John, but the coaching staff, the teaching staff, and numerous community members. This has been blown so out of proportion, and our small, tight-knit community didn't ask for any of this. How are we ever going to expect administrators, teachers, or coaches to ever want to work here? You have already, you already have 16 job openings, which I can only imagine is going to get worse and rise. I know for myself, if I was actively seeking employment, that would be a huge red flag. Again, as a mother, I'm distraught for my own children, Kalen and Nicholas. They have built so many friendships and traditions that they were hoping would last all the way to when they were in high school. And you completely stripped that away from them. Because if you thought for one second we would continue in this district after you allowed our family and our friends to be completely dragged through the mud, you are sadly mistaken. Naturally, I'm heartbroken for John because I know where his heart and soul lies. As a spouse, I witnessed with my own eyes the blood, sweat, and tears that he has poured into this district and athletics. Obviously, not only the football program, but the wrestling program as well. Missing his own children's extracurricular activities and athletics for these student athletes that he treats as his own. In closing, I want to be clear. I can assure you that John and I are not standing here today for ourselves. We are standing here because we owe it to our family, our friends, and the community members that have supported us far beyond measure. I will again ask the board and the superintendent to reconsider their decision or at the very least reopen this investigation using a third-party unbiased investigator. For my family, friends, fellow coaches, volunteers, staff members, students, athletes, and supportive community members, thank you. To the true Duran supporters of the past, present, and future, you are the ones that we are fighting for, thank you.
Next up, we have Drew, and I apologize Drew, but I, is that you? Drew Alward, all right.
This will be short, sweet. Hello, my name is Drew Alward. I'm a senior captain on the football team and wrestling team. John Webb has coached me since I was five years old on the wrestling mat and football field. He's helped me become the person I am today. He's put me in no harm, and I don't agree with the decisions you've, the decisions you've made. And I really think you should rethink your decision that you made. Thank you.
Next up, we have Holly Noonan. Holly?
Okay, first off, I want to read you the definition of the word toxic since it was mentioned earlier. A person who causes distress and hurts feelings and lives through negative words and actions. With that being said, I've known John Webb since my children were super small. John Webb is anything but toxic. Child, he's been back there since playing football his very first year. He spent three years of playing football, I think, and then all the way up. During his whole career, they have probably, under his direction, even lost maybe, you'll have to correct me, all of you guys over here. What was it, like six games? Maybe six games in their whole career, like tackle up? Either way, that's not important, but you know, it's not always important to everyone. But either way, he's still not toxic. When you tell a child that they're one of their favorite coaches, it's not going to be their coach, it's absolutely horrible. They don't want to play those sports anymore when they don't have those people that have been guiding them for so many years, which obviously, like, I'm all for, life change is good. I love change, but I love change for the right reason. I love change when things are being followed correctly. So with that being said, I do have a question for our board. How was it decided that Rebecca Shangster would do the investigation? My question is, did the board vote, did the board, board vote Rebecca to do the investigation? So that's something to keep in mind, how it was decided that Rebecca Shangster would do the investigation? And if the board did the vote on that. I do have a long thing here that I'm supposed to read, but I'm going to, some people, I don't know how much time I have left, but I'm going to read a written statement by Brent Bruegger. He's a seventh-grade student at DMS and a student athlete. I do not want John Webb to be fired, he is a good coach. Him putting someone on the field injured is not true, and I have never seen it done. He has coached me before and he did not put me in a game injured. You don't even get to see John's side of the whole story. And if you, but you did, you would know the truth. The trainer cleared the player on the sideline and said he was good to play, but a week later, the trainer said that he had a concussion. So why doesn't the trainer get fired? John has helped me to get better at football, and he is one of the reasons why I'm still playing football. Without him, I will never play this football game again. He, it's not just about football players that want him. Almost everyone in the community obviously wants him to coach and stay here in Duran. Please do not do this, please keep Coach Webb. We want Coach Webb. Sincerely, Brent Bruegger.
Next up, we have Rachel Wood.
As a medical professional myself, I know firsthand how things can be missed, overlooked, or even at times there's a lack of communication, even in controlled situations when you're surrounded by an entire team of licensed medical professionals. Unfortunately, these things happen, no one likes it, no one waits for it to happen, but at times it does. I'm very thankful that the student athlete didn't endure any substantial injuries from the situation. However, I don't feel like this was any one individual's fault, and I certainly don't feel the responsibility of what seems like a flaw in our system should be tossed on the back of the coach. The individual who is in charge of the managing and coaching of a very fast-paced, intense game, especially when there was an athletic trainer on the sidelines. In my opinion, it is the licensed athletic trainer's job to do a full head-to-toe assessment of a player's injury and decide whether that player is to be removed from play. With all of this said, I encourage the school and the school board to reconsider renewing the loved coach, John Webb's contract, and use this as a learning experience to help develop new policies and procedures to ensure that this type of thing or other medical types of situations aren't missed in the future. I feel that our school could benefit from a committee made up of coaches, including Mr. Webb, school officials, medical professionals, and community members to advise new policies and create new procedures for our student athletes to ensure they have the most positive athletic experience. And I believe bringing Coach John Webb back will do just that, bring back the much-needed positive athletic experience back to our athletes.
All right, next up, we have Kim Fevernitz.
Hi, I'm Kim Fevernitz. I'm a lifelong railroader. Born and raised right here in Duran, and I taught here for many years, so. Right up front, I just have to say, this is amazing. I have attended countless and endless board meetings. I have never seen anything like this. And I hope that the seven of you and the superintendent will take notice that they are all here to support John Webb. So I do have some, I'm here to support John Webb too. I do have some questions for the board. My first question though, I want to know, will you publish these, the answers to these questions for the whole public? Or is it just going to be to me? I'd like it, because I don't do any social media, so I would not be able to get the answers to everybody. So I prefer that they go public, okay? With the athletic handbook, I'm questioning whether or not everyone that you spoke to, if they followed the protocol and the levels of communication. Because I know the first level of communication, if there was a toxic environment for all of those student athletes, the first level would be to the coach, okay? I'd like to know if they contacted the coach and had communication with the coach. The next question would be, did they go to the athletic director? All of that toxic environment that you're talking about, did they take that to the athletic director? The next level of communication, of course, would be the high school principal. Did it go to the high school principal? Then it would go to a superintendent. I'm questioning whether or not any of that toxic language that they're using was taken at those levels. Because every athlete, every parent of those athletes signed that handbook, or they should not have been on the field, right? My next question is, can you let us know when that investigation opened with MHSAA? I'd like a date on that. I would also like to know if we can see the report that was sent to MHSAA and what the response was. Because I believe that you should be submitting a report to MHSAA. So I'd like to know what that entailed. Let me see. Oh, the student athletes that you did interview for the investigation, were their parents notified or involved in that? If this is an investigation, I would imagine you would have a parent in with their minor. So I'm wondering if that happened. I had to take a lot in after listening to the attorney, so I apologize that I didn't have anything prepared, okay? My time is up, okay? Thank you very much, and I expect to do more.
Next up, we have Bart Damon.
Well, I don't know about that, but that's a hard act to follow. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Bart Damon. I was born and raised in Duran. We raised our three childrens in Duran. Two of my four, two of my four grandchildren was also raised and graduated from Duran. I've always been very proud to be called the Duran Railroader. Over the many years, I have seen our athletic department have their winning years, but too many of those years, we didn't have wins at all in our sports program. The last 10 or 12 years, I have watched our programs from youth to high school grow and compete with other schools. Because of John and Carly Webb and the large village of volunteers and crew that worked so hard to build many of these programs, youth to high school. A few years ago, I was asked to work on the bond issue for the Duran schools to make the much-needed improvements so that the school district could be one of that, one of those students that would want to come here. We made that auditorium, we made everything happen. The beautiful rack, the state-of-the-art weight equipment, the big auditorium, the additions and improvements to each and every building we have, K through 12, so our children and students can flourish. We have students that come here because school of choice have transferred here because of the fact that a few years ago, Duran, for the last few years, Duran has been competing with other students, with other schools, and they wanted, and those students wanted to be here in many areas of what Duran has to offer now. I know that there are always two sides to every story. The situation with Coach Webb has the school district and our community in a turmoil. It saddens me that Coach Webb was not given the opportunity to give his account of that last football game regarding number 30. And if only, and if you only viewed the short video from another parent in the stands to make this decision of not keeping John. John was one person on those sidelines. He had several coaches and our trainer on the sidelines with him. They are all there to help him. And if you look at the video, the game did continue, and John was in the game. To the school board, I thank you for being on the school board, it's a thankless job. But, and I know each and every one of you, and a lot of you are my very dear friends. My question to you is, did you see both videos, the one the parents sent and the whole video that showed so much more of that night? Did you discuss with Coach Webb regarding the incident with number 30 of the game before your decision was made not to renew his contract for coaching in the fall of 2025? Or was the decision just made to not review his contract from just viewing the short video from that parent? I have watched both videos several times, over and over. I've always been a firm believer that students who play sports enter into school activities and have pride in their school, also excel in academics. And if you've ever been to a Duran Awards Assembly, you already know that. Duran has excellent students academically also. If John Webb's contract and his staff are not renewed in coaching in the fall of 2025, we at Duran will start to see the domino effect. And all of our schools, and all of our schools will lose. And most of all, our students will lose. Our youth to the high school that we have been working with. It will start with one family after another will transfer to neighboring schools. And we, Duran, will revert back to 10 years ago, not being a school that competes with other schools. Our athletes and students that have grown up in Duran, we have nourished them and groomed them with the help of the youth programs. We will not be, they will not be wearing our blue and white. They will be wearing our neighbor's colors and making those schools proud.
Ken Harris. Unlike most of you, I am not from Duran, didn't grow up, wasn't raised here, et cetera, et cetera. I have lived here for the last 14 years. A couple of things I would like to say. One, I am a substitute teacher here at the middle school. I don't know a lot of your parents, but I know a lot of your kids, including all of the boys in the back. I have a couple of comments I want to make tonight. I have a couple of comments I want to make tonight, and that would be it. Number one is, I was shocked to hear that we did not have a medical doctor on our sidelines. I think if we had a medical doctor on our sidelines, none of us would be here tonight. None of us. Because the decisions were made by some people that weren't qualified to make the decisions, in my opinion. And so, if you had a doctor on the sidelines, if you had a whole new doctor, we wouldn't even, none of us would be here tonight. Because the decisions are made, were not, wouldn't have been made. We all know that. Uh, the second point I want to make is, our principal here at the middle school has gotten a lot of grief over all this, and I want to stand by her and support her, as I know many of you do, and there's quite a few teachers over here tonight. She took a lot of heat over this, and she spends a lot of time at this school. Example, yesterday, she was here at 7:00 a.m. when I got here, when I left at 7:30, she was still here.
Do you know how many hours John put in?
And so, that's the second point I want to make. The third point is, I'm here to support John Webb. I have known John for four years. He came to me, I didn't know this guy, you know the wall over there? He came to me, introduced himself, gave me his phone number, told me who he was, and I said, "If there's anything you can do to help me out, John, let me know." So in the last four years, I've seen him all over the place, just like many of the people up here said. He's every place, all summer long. I see him up and down Saginaw with his cart going different places. I've seen him on his hands and knees at the baseball field, working on it. He's not even a baseball coach, and I know of. So I've seen him all over the place. And I support John, I support some of the things that people said. To me, if I had my kids playing sports right now, I'd want them to play for John Webb.
Two years, he was our varsity head coach my junior and senior year. After school, every day he'd have drinks, Gatorades, food, all of that for us to support us girls before the game. On top of that, uh, he's also a sister wrestling coach, and I wrestled so many years in high school, and honestly, he was the reason I did it. That is the type of effect he had on not just the community, but the kids within the school. My, uh, junior year, uh, I suffered an injury to my elbow, I completely dislocated it, fractured all three bones in my elbow, or in my arm, and tore several ligaments and tendons in it. Uh, the recovery for that was a little over six months, and I wanted to say, through that recovery, there was one coach, not the head wrestling coach, but John Webb made sure to reach out to me each and every week to see my progress, uh, through that injury. So for him, I cannot thank him enough for that, uh, to check down, you know that. Uh, one last thing that I just want to touch on, um, during, when you guys saw, you mentioned there was a flag thrown at the play, uh, I just want to know what that foul, what that foul was. Okay, I just want to know what that foul was. Um, I am a MHSAA registered football official. I, uh, I have a youth, youth school, maybe in varsity football games. Uh, in my opinion, that's a blindside block, does not have to be helmet-to-helmet contact. Um, there's two other penalties. It could have been targeting or illegal helmet-to-helmet contact. Do you really know what that foul was? Was it blindside? Okay, and she said yes. Um, so I just, uh, proof that, I don't like, I'm not a very professional in anything, but it's also the official's responsibility on the field for any, uh, symptoms of that. We are told the safety of the player is very important to us, obviously, and to send them off is going to refer to any concussion symptoms. So, um, I just, I'll just get that, and if this all works out, we'll take that, so, thank you very much.
My name is Mike Delorge, and I am the defensive coordinator of varsity football team. I've been on the staff for the last 30 years. Recently has been set with a negative culture, or a poor culture within our football program, and I couldn't disagree more. During the time that I've been on the staff, I have never once witnessed Coach Webb, or any other coach, Bowie, or Nance, or typically a single person, player or coach. It's actually quite the opposite. We teach teamwork, accountability, and leadership. We're preparing these young men for football, if the life actor. During the time where we had conditioning and hill workouts at the Ohio State High School. In groups, players have to carry large semi-truck tires to the hill over their house. Then they have to drag tires up and down the hill, they flip the tire at the lower end up and down the hill numerous times, other things as well. The workouts are difficult, to say the least, but they're much more than physical workout. They're team-building and leadership exercises. Our senior leaders and captains all have small groups with their team. When they see others struggling, they help. Sometimes it's words of encouragement, other times it's actually a very intimate for a teammate. We are a team, we are a family, we are one. Nobody is left behind no matter what. These workouts go beyond football. These are life lessons, and these are the things that these young men are getting tough. This is our culture, and this is led by Coach John Webb. Thank you.
So obviously, lots have been said here. I prepared this, I prepared this. As I stand here before you this evening, I'm a torn man. I stand in front of the community fighting for these kids. I believe the culture we built is family. People, people don't always like family, but they do always love them. I plead with you to open your minds by reopening this investigation and opening your minds to the possibility of reinstating me, my coaching staff, to continue to lead this football program. All of these players' voices need to be heard, they deserve to be heard, not 11 kids, hand-selected by certain individuals. We did everything in our power to ensure that nobody would ever play with a head injury. The video that you've seen up here is not the video we had on the sideline. We have huddled, I don't know if you guys are aware, there's two different videos than the video that I posted in response to that video. Listen, when I saw that video with, with the narration on it, I would have fired me. I would have fired me. So I know you guys, I know what you saw when you seen that. That is not the information we have, that, the night of that. And again, the information I had in that time, in real time, was that Blake got hit, he got pulled up, okay, that's what we could see. Number three runs past him, and then next thing you know, Blake is running to me after the official spoke to me about the, about the play. That it was not helmet-to-helmet, it was shoulder-to-shoulder, they were very clear. And again, we can, on the huddle, we can zoom in on it, and we see that it's a shoulder-to-shoulder hit, and then Blake comes running to me and says, "Coach." I say, "Blake, are you okay?" He said, "I just got a wind knock out of me, Coach." And so I said, "Go see our trainer." And that is what I said. I'm not mincing words, I'm not trying to do a play on words, okay? I trusted our athletic trainer to do his job by evaluating the player that was sent in. He did not tell me, he did not tell me in this investigation that the word of number three is more important than a kid, than a guy who's been trained for 25 years to look at these. I'm looking at this and, you know, in an investigation they don't talk about, I am upset when, when I call that timeout. Because I have a player who, again, obviously is unhappy with me, his parents aren't happy with me, and that's okay. Like I said, you're not always going to like your family. But listen, I don't hold a grudge against that player, nothing, okay? Again, what happened with that situation was, that player was looking out for his teammate, we had no knowledge of that. We had no knowledge of it. It would have been completely lost if we could have seen that, okay? That is not what that rule is all about. That rule is about if our trainer would have been, would have said, "Well, I think he's got a concussion," and I said, "I don't care, put him back in." That is not what happened, it would never happen, never happen. And I think there's many people here that would speak to that, that I would never and did never, knowing that I would have been there. So listen, I'm going to take this time because a lot of kids got a lot of stuff taken away from them, okay? And again, this investigation, um, the MHSAA has not received the findings. They don't have an investigator. I have a paperwork saying that they're waiting on Mrs. Knapp's findings to make their decision. I was told in my dismissal meeting that we had to already forfeit that game and then we were on probation, so that's part of the reason why I couldn't be renewed. And I was told that, and it was hopefully recorded by the secretary. Um, the MHSAA has a different view of that. The MHSAA has told me that they're waiting on her findings, and they don't do these investigations. So I don't know how that's been portrayed. At this time, I would just like to take this time because, again, lots have been stripped of the kids of this community, and, um, we had a lot of great football players. We battled through a lot of injuries this year, and these kids persevered, okay? I know they, I know they were taken whatever, but we have, we have, um, some great football players, and I want to recognize my football team right now with their All-Conference Awards. I have Drew Lawver, was first team All-Conference Player. Carver Purdy, who was first team, uh, offensive lineman, first team All-Conference. And Julian, Julian Holtman, was first team All-Conference. As an athlete, uh, two-way player. Another first team All-Conference member, Carver Purdy, was a defensive back. Two second-team players, Trent Ackerman, uh, is a linebacker, and Grayton Kelly is a defensive back. We have three, three All-Conference All-players. Levi Smith, a linebacker, Darius Aldrich, a defense player, and Tom Worthy, an All-Conference All-Star.
All right, next up we have Lance.
So, um, to say there's a culture, um, I think that's very hard to say with 11 kids. 11 kids opinion on a culture, and of three different coaches. Like John said, that's not true. I'm not good at this. He did, right? I can use law enforcement. Um, I went on that topic. In the investigation, if this is what we're calling it, I question you certain time. You were charged criminally for this, but you sit there and say, "This is what my findings are on one side of the video." The grandfather served on that board for 24 years. He drove on many school buses, bus drivers, custodians, he's had issues. I asked the board to please look into this, ask some questions, reinstate the man.
Next up, I have Monica Ellsworth.
My name is Monica Ellsworth. And Monica, you speak of toxic culture. Please tell me, if John Webb and his staff's culture was so toxic, why would my 13-year-old eighth-grade daughter, who is an all-year athlete, want to play football under these men? John Webb especially. Why did all your daughters want to take orders from any man? She wanted to take orders from him as her coach because she knew he would lift her up. He would make her better, he would make her stronger. Not as just an athlete, but as a female, young lady, getting older. This man, I support him in all aspects and his coaching staff. You guys need to reverse this, because if not, do you understand how many of your future athletes and their parents are removing their children from their school? Basketball, volleyball, softball, soccer, powerlifting, wanted football. You're going to lose so many athletes that make a name for your school. Are you willing to risk that on these bogus allegations? Seriously? And when I say multiple parents pulling their students, you won't have a basketball team for the next up-and-coming girls. You prob- might not have volleyball, even if you do, I can promise you it ain't going to be as great as it would be. Because those of us have athletes. We don't just have kids wanting to play, we have athletes, and he is part of the reason that we have those athletes. Because even though he doesn't coach basketball, volleyball, softball, and soccer, yes, his daughter plays, but he's not just there supporting her, he's there supporting the entire team as a whole, and each one of these girls has an individual. That man is there, applauding, clapping, telling them, "Good job." Where are you guys at? I've seen, I've seen two. Evan, where are you? He's not even on the board, and he supports them. Why aren't you guys? Those are your future athletes. You care so much about them, why aren't you supporting them?
Thanks, Ms. Ellsworth.
My name is Madison, and I support John Webb because he's been there most of our lives, and he's been supporting us culture this year, all the years that we've been here. I've been here since I was in preschool through, and John Webb, he's supported me everything. I want to play football so bad, because I know he will bring me up as a player, bring me up as a student, and keep me going through this school. If he's not, doesn't get his job back, I would be up and gone, and I would never come to support the school again. I will never step foot on this ground again, and if he does not come back, I am happy to see that. Except that he's a football coach coming to support us girls, us boys, all of us children, and you guys, knowing that you can support us when we're your future athletes, like my mom said.
Okay, next up I have Martha Owens. Josh Chapman.
Uh, first of all, I would say thank you to the school board members and Mrs. Knapp for calling this special meeting. Uh, as I lay out the facts here, understanding that I have no narrative. First, my son did take the blindside a day on 10/25, but he was never concussed. He never showed signs of being concussed. Did he get wind knocked out of him? Yes. At halftime, Blake went into the training room. At this time, he was still not evaluated for concussion. Or Ken gave him a bag of ice for his groin, to which he tweaked earlier, and he also had a sore knee in the previous JV games. You know my son, you know that he will tell you when he's young. He is not willing to let you let his teammates down, but he will tap out when he knows he's vulnerable. There was never a thought of whether or not he could return in the game. Matter of fact, I walked over to the A.D. and asked if Blake wasn't playing because of the parents, to which I replied, to which he replied, "I'm not sure, but I don't think so." Secondly, he was never looked at for a concussion until the following week, which Ken said showed sign, which Ken said he had showed signs. Now, I don't know if there was pressure to diagnose- Now, I don't know if there was pressure to diagnose him with one for liability purposes, but he was not concussed. When we were told we needed to take him to the doctor to be examined, which we did on 11/6, the doctor confirmed my suspicions that he was great, and that he was able to return sports. He was still forced to sit off for basketball trials for the first three days, because Ken put him on restrictions. After the doctor cleared him for full participation. Now, for legal purposes, I would assume that passing a liability to our family doctor off from the school would have been best. But the school intervened and put him back on restrictions. Did you know that there's a point system that positions pertaining to concussions? Blake didn't score a single point, which means no concussion. So, lastly, as I finish up my time here, I want to say, in no way did I ever think John was putting my son in a dangerous way. I always believed John was looking out for Blake's best interest, and had I seen the video that was being shared around and on the community page in real time, I probably wouldn't make Blake get looked at by the trainer so that he had got, so that he could get back on the field. I understand you have to look at, out for the kids, for their safety and the liability of the school, but I never had a question of my son's safety, and I never threatened to sue the school. If this whole thing's about Blake having a concussion, the discussion should be over because my son never had a concussion.
My name is Brian Johnson. Uh, I have known me, I've been involved in Duran football for probably 36 years, whether it was me as a player. I graduated from Duran, played five years in Duran's football program. Coached middle school for three years, coached youth football for nine years. I've had two sons that have went through the program. I have another son that is currently in the program as a sophomore. Um, right now, Duran football is the best place I've been in 36 years I've been there. And you can attribute that to Coach Webb, Carly, and the support staff they've had along the way. Um, listening to everything that's went on tonight, it kind of, uh, clicks in my head that, uh, it sounds to me more like there were a couple of people that had, I don't want to use the word vendetta against John, but we're looking at it. You know, uh, I know for a fact that there are some people that don't want to see eye to eye with John, and I will tell you myself, I don't know if I would see eye to eye with John. But, I think he does it well by the kids. Um, because players love him. My son, who is a sophomore, um, yeah, he comes home, complains about Coach John being a little rough on him, but it's football. It's life. It's not always going to be fair. It's not always going to be easy. Now, if some parents want to call that a toxic culture, that's your priority. Me, I call it turn them into young men, young women. I tell you right now, John is trying not as hard on his, on my kid as I do. So, you know, it is what it is. But, you know, I went through a lot of years with this, these programs, watching new coaches every couple of years, watching the programs take five years, step back because we decided to bring in new coaches because one or two parents had a problem. One thing I have seen from, and I'm not saying it's just this administration, but over the years, that Duran schools does not support their coaches very well. They do not stand behind their coaches very well. And like somebody mentioned earlier, it's going to be a tough job getting another coach in here that, you know, has been a lot to be here for a long time. Because when they see the history of Duran schools as far as coaches, they're going to be like, "Why haven't I applied for that job? Been there two years, somebody's filed a complaint, I'm going to be gone." So, you know, that, that's about all I have to say. I just hope you guys reconsider and take in whatever, you know, what everybody said tonight. And the other question I get for you was, you showed the MHSAA, MHSAA program. Okay? Noran, or did you point out that, uh, if a coach was to put a player with suspicion, concussion back on the field, that coach was to be fired? They say, "School would be put on probation." Never, never once did you say anything about being fired. So, you named a state? Probation. Why are we fired? Everybody makes mistakes in life, folks. I mean, and I'm not saying John did, and I'm not saying he did. I'm just saying, I feel like this was kind of a butcher.